Welcome councillors, staff and gallery to our meeting of the 16th of September. As traditional, we welcome to country.
We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru bangala miriya, yuradumilbu. Thank you.
Thank you, and in pledging our oath to Waiola, we, the Waiola council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. In offering condolences to our obituary list, we'll ask those that wish to to stand, and then we have a moment's silence, please. We remember Martin Sparret, Pat Lemmons, Peter Gale, Craig Niebo, Jack Shrapel, Jean Pilkington, Jeanetta Burgess, Olive Gorman, Susan Duer, Armando Cavina, Colin Allen, Maurice Unsworth, Alan Mercer and Henry Lockwood. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have apologies tonight from councillors Todd, Inglis, Knox and Deputy Mayor Pond. We have no leave of absence, but I would like us to move, please. In relation to councillor Todd, that due to current health challenges, the council grants councillor Todd a leave of absence for a period of up to three months. Somebody care to move that way and second a councillor Klobbika? Moved and seconded by councillor Westerman, thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carry, and I thank you. Item five, council member executive declarations 5.1. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare? Councillor Simpson?
I have a conflict of interest in item 20.1, 3.2.
And what is the motion for conflict, councillor?
Steve, I have a request for the beach, right?
Thank you, councillor. Any further conflicts or interests? Moving on to 5.2 gives some benefits, does anybody have a gift or benefit they need to declare? No, thank you, we'll move on. Item six, the minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday 19th of August. We have a recommendation, will somebody care to move that recommendation? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carry, thank you. Item 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday 26th of August. We have a recommendation to adopt as a true and correct record of that meeting. Move councillor Campbell, do I have a seconder? Seconded councillor Westerman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carry, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, 7.1, licensed use of memorial oval. That matter has since been addressed. So moving on to item eight, deputations, nil. Item nine, petitions, nil. Item 10, public question time, nil. Item 11, council member activities. See them on the screen scrolling through there. Opportunity if any member wants to add anything brief to what they've submitted. No, we will take it as read, thank you. Item 14, reports from council officers, 14.1, the office of the chief executive, 14.1.1, the CEO's action report for September. We have the report, we'll take it as read, anybody before I call for motions? Anybody wish to? Any quick now, I'm not touching anything, closer. Now your complaint is too close. Any questions of the CEO? Councillor Border?
Yeah, just about the facing redundancies information session on the 4th of September, there was an evening session there that I think was a bit quite well attended. And I just wanted to see what the outcomes of that were and then what the next steps were for the community in that situation. Thank you councillor Border and through the mayor. So the session was attended probably by about 15 to 20 businesses from recollection. A number of different agencies presented information in terms of programs, support, funding, assistance that can be provided to businesses that may be struggling due to supply chain issues, cash flow issues, payments arrangements, et cetera. There was a suite of information that was provided to the businesses that attended. And I've got a list of a number of websites and various sites where those businesses could self-serve to get supplementary information, so I'm happy to circulate that to councillors. Quite a long list of different agencies, different programs and support that can be provided. So when you see the list, you'll see it's quite an extensive list. The businesses that attended were given the opportunity to reach out or back to the various agencies or the relevant agencies, depending on their circumstances. And the organisers of that session indicated that they might do a follow-up program in a number of weeks or months' time, depending on how the economic conditions unfold. And encourage all of the businesses to reach out to other local businesses to share some of that information.
Councillor, happy? Any further questions or comments to the CEO? If not, we have a recommendation there that we note the chief executive office's action report for September. Move councillor Border? Seconded councillor Westerman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carry, thank you. 14.1.2, local government finance authority, the election for the positions of representative members of the board of trustees. Now we have a report, I will refer to the CEO as to whether there is any guidance to elected members who need to vote on this.
Yep, thank you, through the mayor. Just knowing a number of the candidates that have put their name forwards for appointment. The candidate that from my perspective stands out is Michael Sedgman, who is now the CEO of the City of Adelaide. The reason I suggest that he's an appropriate appointment is that he has actually served on the authority for some time, knows local government, he's been in local government for an extended period of time and is a professional accountant by background, so I don't know if I can provide much more advice, but other than just knowing the number of the individuals and their background, I think Michael would be a suitable appointment.
Thank you, CEO, and I can't say that I sought the advice of the CEO for tonight's meeting because I think very few of us would be aware of the majority of names there. Councillor Simpson?
I read the report and I thought that Grant Piggott looks not bad at Adelaide either, do you know anything about him?
Sorry?
Grant Piggott, P I G O I T, is there anything about him?
Yeah, I know a little bit about Grant, but in terms of that depth of experience and particularly relevant information for the nature of the appointments, Michael Sedgman would certainly be the stronger of the two candidates.
Thank you councillor, councillor Border?
It says we nominate someone and someone, so are we not nominating two people? Yep, alright, can I move that we nominate two people?
Yes councillor.
So I move that we nominate Michael Sedgman and Grant Piggott.
Thank you councillor, do I have a seconder? Councillor Simpson, seconding. In that case, we have a motion moved and seconded, I will put that recommendation, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2, corporate services, ordinary reports, 14.2.1, the monthly budget report for August 2024. Before I call for any motions, I'll refer to the CEO, who will refer to the finance manager?
Yes, thank you mayor. Certainly, if there's any questions that councillors have in relation to the monthly budget report, Grant Jennings will be able to respond to those. I anticipate there may be a few questions about the timing of some of the work, so Grant will certainly be able to provide an update on a number of the projects that are listed. If councillors got any particular questions about any of those projects, I'll maybe if we start with questions from elected members, mayor?
Yes, CEO, do we have any questions? Councillor Simpson?
This is the financial report, yes? Budget report.
Monthly budget report, item 14.2.1, page 63.
That's what I want. Just my comment on the fact our procurement of outside consultants, is that the right report? Good. We've got to really think about limiting our requires to outside consultants, I think. The way things are going, we should be looking after ourselves a bit more and trying to think about how to curtail spending money out of town to outside consultants. I appreciate the fact that we know nothing about airport runways technically, but we look at the fact we've got asset management and planning maintenance. True, we have somebody on staff who can do that or look after that area without using an outside consultant. I'm not going to give guidance here.
Thank you councillor.
Yeah, happy to answer that in the first instance, so yeah, this year, I mean, the majority for this year has been the airport runway investigation and planning for the cuttlefish dive site, and they previously have come to council via reports. The other?
Oh, yeah, man. Yeah, the cuttlefish dive, truly the contractor was able to do his own work on what we need to do, why do we have to hire someone to do it?
No, so this was the work being undertaken by Brave and Curious, Brave and Curious for the long-term plan, I'll go for that, so. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? Much of the actual on-the-ground work that occurs following the design work, et cetera, is absolutely done by local contractors. So, you know, in terms of the cuttlefish dive site, you know, much of the work was actually undertaken in terms of redevelopment by local contractors whilst the consultant was Brave and Curious, for example, that was the concept and the design, whereas the implementation is certainly locals do have a great role in that.
Any further comments or questions, members?
Asset management, that we're going to get a consultant for.
Yep, so that's support, we probably the software side of asset management, so the actual on-the-ground work once again is done in-house, but we do get assistance with like our software that we use for asset management and that planning assessment stuff is back up during for larger ones that come through. So those are probably more minor in that list, but we just wanted to, for the sake of transparency, list the main items in there. But the other two are much higher than those two.
Any further counsel? Any other questions or comments? In that case, we have a recommendation in front of us, the council receives and notes the monthly budget report August 2024. Do I interpret that as move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border? I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. 14.2.2, the Waiola city amenity project. Again, before I call for movers and seconders, I refer to the CEO.
Yeah, I'll ask our director of corporate services Cathy Jarrett to talk to this item in the first instance. Once again, starting point is that the report should be taken as read, but happy to respond to any questions or clarification that councillors may have.
So any questions, councillors? No questions?
Yes, councillor Border? Sorry for being slow on the button there. In regards to on page 83, there's escalate tree removal. And I just wonder what escalation or what scale of escalation there would be, so that was to come out of the $100,000 of budget that was allocated to it. And I just wonder how we determine how much and how much the community want to be involved in letting us know how much it should be and whether that's an opportunity to engage with the community and say, look, here's what we're planning to do. We can go the whole $500,000 or we can do a piece-by-piece approach. But I'd just be interested to see what the council thought of that idea.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor. Escalation of tree removals is based on risk assessment. And so we will be coming to the October council meeting with a full report outlining the current risk profile that council has in relation to trees. Considering the right across local government, the tree failures that occur, it is certainly incumbent on us to ensure that we have a very accurate profile of the health of all of our trees and then a program of pruning and tree removal as required based on that risk assessment. That body of work is largely done and what we're doing is we are currently pulling together a report for council consideration in terms of the allocation of funding for an escalation of the tree removal program of those trees that are at very high risk or high risk of failure. And we will be looking to get quotes from local contractors in terms of tree removal on the basis of a program of tree removals in the efforts to seek an economies of scale approach and therefore reduce costs associated with that tree removal. So whilst I haven't answered your question specifically in terms of amount and how that's, what's coming through, that will come through in a report in October. It's fair to say that we do have quite a significant number of trees that are on the program for removal or heavy pruning to ensure that we're actually managing the risk across the city. And we do need to escalate that program because it can't be accommodated within existing resources. So that analysis will come through to council on the basis of what the costs and the resource requirements are for that removal program, what the timeframe that that removal program can happen through and by on the basis of risk and then an assessment as to what the budget allocation and resource allocations are required. And that might be over a one, two, three, five year period.
And on that note, when we're chopping trees down or pruning them out of necessity, I think there are people in the community that think that we're not planting trees again. So I think any communication that says, here are the trees that because of their high-risk nature, we are removing, at the same time, I think communicate, but here are the trees that we planted to maintain the greening of Waiola.
Absolutely, and as part of the report that is coming through to council in terms of the tree removal is actually a policy position in terms of the planting program. It's not just a matter of actually replanting trees that have been removed because you have to factor in the costs of establishment of trees over a period of time. Right at this point in time, we have paused the tree planting program in the context of additional trees where there is a replacement tree that's required, that tree planting program is continuing as we speak. But in terms of the greening Waiola project and the planting of additional trees, because of the resource requirements in the establishment of trees, including continual watering and pruning, formative pruning in the very early stages, that needs to be modeled in the context of the tree profile that we've got across the city and also in the context of what the council's strategic vision is in terms of canopy across the city.
And sorry, and just my last point on that, when you mentioned the watering, knowing that that's a big cost, I think that explanation to the community of what you just said and encapsulating that the maintenance of pruning and formation pruning, as I think you mentioned, and the watering, I don't have that understanding until I got onto council. So I think the members of the community that would want to know as well that it's a lot of money to water and a lot of resource to water these trees.
Absolutely, and we can certainly put out an education program in that regard.
Thank you, thank you councillor. Any further questions? In that case, we have a report with two recommendations there, could I call for somebody to move councillor Border moving and seconded? Councillor Klobbika? Put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 14.2.3, the Waiola former park. You have a report, we'll take that as read. Anybody has any questions or comments, I will refer those in the first instance to the CEO. In that case, if there are no questions or comments, could I call for somebody to move the recommendations, please? Councillor Border moved, councillor Campbell seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 14.2.4, the Waiola Wanderers Soccer and Social Club lease agreements. Again, you have the report, we'll take that as read. And if anyone has any questions or comments, I will refer those in the first instance to the CEO. Are there any questions? Yes councillor Border?
Just a quick question, it might be obvious, but we're saying yes to negotiate with the Wanderers Soccer Club to then put the particulars of that lease together, so we're not agreeing to a rent or any specific details. Does this decision then give administration permission to go and execute that agreement based on terms they agree? Or another report comes back and says, here are the terms that we've discussed with the Wanderers, here's the impreachable agreement, do we accept?
Another report will come back to council.
Any further questions? Councillor Simpson?
Just promoted, thank you.
Move councillor Simpson, do I have a seconder, please? Seconded councillor Westerman? I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. 14.3, city growth, ordinary reports, 14.3.1, the re-establishment of the building fire safety committee and re appointing or appointing officers under the planning, development and infrastructure act 2016. You have the report there, we'll take that as read with quite a few recommendations. If anybody has any questions or comments, again, in the first instance, I'll refer to the CEO, does anybody have any questions? If not? Sorry, yes, no, right? In that case, I'll call for somebody to move the recommendation? Move councillor Simpson, sorry?
We need a nominee.
Can I ask what the time commitment is?
My apologies. Thank you all.
Did I miss it, mayor, what's the time commitment for the member that's?
I'll seek advice on that councillor.
Three years.
Three years.
Yep.
Unless it's an emergency, they meet quarterly, so the building fire safety committee meet, yes, four times a year unless there's something urgent.
Locally?
Yes, they do.
Yep, I'm happy to nominate.
Thank you councillor, so we shall insert that in the recommendations. Now, I call for councillor?
I second his nomination.
Sorry?
I second his nomination, right? No, I don't have to do that.
I'm still trying to find the mover. Would somebody care to move the recommendation? Councillor Westerman move, councillor Campbell seconded, thank you very much. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carry, thank you. 14.3.2, the event strategy 2025-2030, lengthy document there, we'll take that as read. If my memory serves me correct, it has been before council before as at a briefing. Do we, councillor Campbell? Right, councillor Campbell's moving, would anybody care to second it, councillor Border, seconding it? So move councillor Campbell, seconded councillor Border. I will put the recommendation that council adopts the event strategy 2025 to 2030, those in favour? Against, carry, thank you. 14.3.3, the revocation of dedication to council and community land status, lots 1882 McEwan Street. Again, I will take the report as read and any questions, I will refer to the CEO in the first instance. Councillor?
Moving.
You're moving. Alright, we have a motion from councillor Border, would somebody care to second councillor Campbell? I will put the motion, those in favour? Against, carry, thank you. 14.3.4, the former civic building update. Again, we'll take the report as read and any questions or comments, I will refer to the CEO, councillor Border?
Yes, two wanting to move it, I think this makes absolute sense. But then my critical question is, why wasn't this done in the first place? Why was the scaffolding put up and not this, this being the better option? What was the thought process at the time about the scaffolding?
I'll get the director of corporate services to respond to that question.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor. We needed to act with speed in the first instance. We had a circumstance where a piece of the building had fallen down. And so the recommendation from the engineers at the time was to move with speed and to get the scaffolding up to provide the protection to members of the community walking past. And since that time, we had left the scaffolding there whilst we were sort of working through other matters in terms of the civic building, including including the relocation of the administration from the civic building to here. Following moving to this building and there being, the matter was raised again in terms of the impact of the scaffolding on Forsyth Street. So we then went back to the engineers to test an engineering design that had been presented to us as a suggestion. And that testing proved that that engineering was actually very feasible. And so hence this report.
If I may just add to that, the initial decisions or decisions made by council were based on engineering, independent expert engineering advice that was received at the time. The scaffolding was believed to be the most appropriate and most effective treatment to address the public safety risk. So it was actually based on independent engineering advice. I think the same company then provided the second lot of advice based on the suggested, the suggestion. So same, same company, but different advice at two different points in time.
I'm sorry, if I can just add one, one further thing, at the time when the scaffolding was erected, the mutual liability scheme had also come out and done an inspection in terms of the risk profile that we were managing at the time. And they were also fundamental in the decision in terms of the speed to move towards managing that risk.
Thank you, councillor Simpson?
I just have one more point with your indulgence, thank you. So on that note, and thank you for the explanation. I think a lot of the community are just thinking that obviously it's not ideal looking. But that explanation I'm comfortable with. And I just wonder, things like this in the future where someone's going to walk past, especially with our focus on city amenity and the look and the pride that we want in our city. It just, it seems seemed without that explanation, it seemed contradictory. I think somehow we need to communicate that to the community in a more digestible fashion, in a timely fashion, to just preempt and avoid the inevitable, why is that there? What if it doesn't have to be there? Because clearly, obviously, timing is a factor here as well. But just for those things to be communicated to the community.
Noted.
I also note that comment, but I will also respond that at the time that the council made that decision, there was very clear communication by the council as to why the scaffolding was put in place. And as I said, at the time, that was the advice that we received from independent engineers. So it was timely, the information went out at that time, that was the time that the decision was made. But I'll take your point that maybe we need to repeat some of that messaging so that some of those messages don't get lost with time.
But councillor Simpson?
I know the thank you very much. I know the scaffolding has been replaced by another product, this other product can be there, could be lasted for another years. We're unaware of how long before we knock down the, or we do any elimination work. It's three or four or five years or two years fixed.
Our understanding is, is that the that the works will be sustainable over the period of time that is necessary. One of the requirements of the engineer is that as the building remains, we need to continue to monitor the safety of that building on a regular basis. And we have engaged the engineers to actually undertake that monitoring for us. Or that is, you know, that is certainly in the, in the programme of works in terms of asset management, that that monitoring is continued on a quarterly basis to ensure that that building does not pose a risk to any member of the public walking past. Or on the occasions when staff or contractors need to access the internal building for various different activities. So it is being monitored.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? In that case, we have Yep, I moved it. Yes, councillor Border move. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Simpson moving, seconding.
Correct.
We have a motion, I will put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item fifteen, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. You have that list there. Also, to add to that, the CEO and I had a meeting at the request of independent MLC Frank Pangello this afternoon with his chief of staff. We met for about an hour and a quarter, discussed a whole range of topics. Obviously, concerns within the community, which we are all aware of, and we've certainly been playing our part in trying to show our empathy and action within the community over the GFG issues. Also, a range of other topics discussed, future of hydrogen. CEO, you might like to, thank you. The state prosperity project was discussed. Also, another potential development, which we have briefings or company coming to Waila very soon. Net zero future opportunities, there is a company that has developed synthetic petrol diesel. And Waila is one of the sites that they will be looking at. All they also need for the future of their project is hydrogen. It's another one of those spin offs that we have the potential of getting once the hydrogen plant is all up and running. It did mention that there had been some more blast furnace outages. We're still, in fact, I have had a meeting with the CEO earlier today and asked that we do approach GFG at least for their latest update on the situation as they see it, and also ask questions more about the blast furnace. There was general discussion with Mr Pangello about the payments of supplies. There still seems to be different information out there, what we received from one quarter as against others. Yes, the meeting, the public meeting last night, he tells us, addressed the lack of maintenance and cleaning. That is part of the, I guess, cutbacks at the site. And of course, we're all hoping that one day the price of iron ore might start to rise. I never expected at this stage in life to be watching the markets every day to see the price of iron ore. I think we certainly had a good conversation. Built a relationship there. And also, one of the questions he raised in his words was the rates hike. We didn't question, we corrected him on the reference to rate hike. Once it was discussed at length, and particularly with his chief of staff, he obviously was unaware that the issue we've got is going from sites to capital values. When he became aware of that, he understood why some people were very much up in arms about rate hikes. It was very obvious that he wasn't aware of that aspect. He didn't think it was compulsory, but as we pointed out, legislation has given us no choice. But I think it was very amicable and we'll afford to catching up next time he's in Waila. We became aware that he was going to be in Waila, I think on Tuesday. We were approached to, for him and his chief of staff to meet with us. At that stage, we had no knowledge of why he was in Waila. That only became aware very much close to the weekend. But no, a very good conversation. And yeah, somebody that we can also work with to ensure that we get the right information. Don't think I can say anything more if anybody's got any questions then. Right, in that case, you have a recommendation before you for the mayor's list of engagements, councillor Simpson?
Proposing.
Thank you, and seconded councillor Border, thank you for that. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Item fifteen point two, Corporate Services City Growth Monthly Information Report. Very extensive report there with a lot of information. If anybody has any questions or comments, I will, again, refer them to the CEO in the first instance. If anybody has any questions or comments. Councillor Border.
I may have missed this in the report, but is there any estimate on the repair work that the community have to spend on vandalism specifically? So on repairing the bollards and all those, there's lots of photos in there and a good description of the vandalism. Do we have a cost that we can share with the community of what it's costing us?
Yeah, I think we had that in a media release. It must have come from council.
In the first instance, Graham, can you respond with an indication of what we're currently spending on vandalism or take that on our notice?
Not off the top of my head, because I've got to read the different accounts that goes.
I'm happy to respond. So from what, why Open Spaces coordinator has been looking after my civil coordinator in excess of thirty odd grand in the last, you know, quarter or so. Thank you.
Perhaps I can add to that as well. As a result of, and I didn't realise it at the time, but evidently the advertiser did a story recently, very recently, about the cost of vandalism to local government per se. And in South Australia, the cost of vandalism to local government is over the three million dollars. We did have some media, a media release out, which we've said is costing us fifty thousand plus based on the plants that were pulled out down at the foreshore. And so, based on that, I had a phone call from Narel Graham, the late afternoon ABC State and Broken Hill Programme, who seems to think we're a source of information these days on generally positive stories, but at times negativity. So we had quite a conversation about the type of vandalism and I were looking at other local governments as well. And I specifically used an example, that just imagine how many other pieces of playground equipment we could spend not fifty thousand on. And I believe that's probably a conservative figure, because that doesn't take into account vandalism costs on other agencies and other service providers. So that's how that story came about and how we got some fairly good publicity of a negative in what local government has to put up with and what it costs rapers. So yeah, just adding that as a bit more info. Right, getting back to the report in front of us, does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Just a comment that is a lot of detail and good reading, it gives an insight of what's happening around the place, which is very good.
And I can add to that, that a lot of that sort of information will come out from the mayor's desk in both print and video format as well. And other media releases that will follow. The recommendation, we have the recommendation there, would somebody care to move it, councillor Border? Seconded councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item sixteen, notices of motion. We have none. Item seventeen, questions on notice, we have none. Questions without notice? Does anybody have a question without notice?
I do. Yep. Did we, did we remove the section motions without notice?
No, that's next.
Well, that's next, is it? Okay, sorry, no questions.
Item nineteen, motions without notice.
I have a question.
Oh, my apologies councillor.
It's okay. Just, just generally, there was a post on Facebook with some illegal dumping. You might have seen, and there was some clear evidence of who the rubbish belonged to. I'm just curious if anybody reported that to council, and if so, was there any action?
We'll take that one on notice and get back to you.
Yeah, that's certainly a post I haven't seen, and I try to monitor everything everywhere.
I'll come back to you and get the location of that.
Yes.
Sorry, I can answer that question. We went out to inspect the site and a local has cleaned it up on our behalf. So I'd like to thank you that was, but yeah, it's cleaned up. It was out of the industrial area, right at the end, keep going out of the bush and went for a drive to have a look.
Thank you councillor, thank you. Item nineteen, motions without notice. Do you have any notices, motions without notice, councillor Border?
I do, I've got three, and I apologize that they weren't put in motions with notice. I did send an email to the councillors just letting them know that I'd be moving them tonight, so.
Right, now I need to raise that, the fact that it is a very detailed motion really needs to be a notice on the October meeting. So that any resources that are required can be reported to council instead of just being immediately adopted tonight.
I think the nature of them might be in that category already. I'm happy for them to be, they're not time critical, but they're not incredibly detailed. But I'm happy for them to be in October's meeting, but would you like to hear them first?
Ideally because I think both the motions, or the two that I'm thinking of do require an addressing by administration as to the cost or resource implications to be considered at the same time.
One of the, I'll start with the first one which we've seen before about the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons. We've seen that before, I'll start with that one. So council resolves to support the federal government of Australia. Oh, you've already in there already? Oh, my apologies, okay. Yes, can I move that? And can I, well, yeah, thank you. So can I, can I move that? And then if there's a second.
Certainly councillor.
I'll move it.
Move councillor Border, now does councillor Border have a second to that motion? Councillor Simpson?
Right.
Just a matter of clarification. When you say that council resolves to support the federal government signing, that implies that the federal government is happy to sign the treaty, which I'm not sure is actually the case. So I think you may need to change support to a different word.
Yep, I'm happy to be corrected. I thought the information was that the government is happy to sign it and that our putting this to the ICAN is to encourage them to, to sign it. But that, but I'm happy to stand corrected on that, but that was the information that I was relying on. What word could we put in there instead of support?
Sorry. Request?
Yep, I'm happy for that to be in.
Yeah. You're happy with that councillor then?
I'm happy with that, thank you.
Right, okay. Moved and seconded. In that case, if we're happy with that, happy with the wording, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you.
Now I mentioned about the other two motions.
Really need to to be motions that go to, motions of notice to the next meeting. So that any resources required can be identified when it comes up for the group decision.
Yep, they're not, they're not time critical, so that's okay.
If you're happy to bring those both back as notices or motions and just discuss it.
Cool, yep, that's okay.
Thanks councillor. Right, moving on. Item twenty is consideration of confidential items. Now, we do have presentations as part of the confidential items at seven. So we shall adjourn.
Do we need to discuss it before the presentation? So maybe adjourned.
Adjourned until quarter to seven. Adjourned until quarter to seven. Right, we're back into our meeting. Would somebody care to move and second that we recommence our meeting? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Could I now have somebody to move that we go into confidence, please? Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Westerman, put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried. Do we have any conflicts of interest, noting that councillor Inglis is now in attendance? Councillor Simpson?
Yes, I declared that earlier.
Thank you councillor.
Twenty point one point one and twenty point one point two.
Thank you councillor. Thank you, you have the list of, there's one or two meetings coming up. And at eight forty eight, I declare the meeting closed and thank you so much for your deliberations.